All right, it is 4:00 PM on Tuesday, February 14th, 2022. It's the meeting of the Christian Board of Selectmen. Is there motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second. Holdings in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please rise.
What we believe is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands, one nation, and the North, indivisible, indivisible, justice for all.
All right, we do not have any minutes to be approved. We don't have meeting mail, we don't have appointments. Our budget, I'm going to take this out of order. We're not going to do town accounting, treasurer, collector. We're going to bring animal control up first. Becky, how are you?
Gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Looks like your budget is level funded, is that right?
It is, sir.
Okay. I think that's an easy one. It's up 100 bucks.
Sorry.
It's an easy one.
I know this is a budget meeting, but how are things going? You've got the equipment you need.
I do.
You're getting the service from, you know, our collaborative arrangements with the other towns. Everything's doing good, right?
We're doing good right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion two, is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second. Holdings in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for everything you do, Mr. Tom Wilson.
You're very welcome, sir.
All right. Police Department.
Police.
Chief Richmond.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening.
Good afternoon.
All right, what do you got? Briefly, it's pretty close to level. Because we, not having to send anybody to the academy, the police academy in fiscal '24, we cut $50,000 in academy salaries line item and $14,000 in academy expenses. So we ran off the rip, we cut it by $64,000. The only really significant increase would be in the vehicle line item, but that's more than offset by the $64,000 cut. Everything else is status quo on the expense side. Salary side, that's to be determined. In a lot of cases, you have a couple unsettled contracts there. And there's also the, I'll say, the structural flaw in how the overtime line item is calculated that we might want to adjust once we get the contract squared away. But to do it now, I mean, it's really not going to solve anything. But as I mentioned a few months ago when I was before you talking about giving you a quarterly update on overtime, then the average overtime bill in the last six full fiscal years has been $444,000 and I've been budgeted at $255,000. So as long as there's the understanding that that $255,000 is not realistic, not even in the best of years, I don't know that we can adjust it now with staffing that we're at now, but in contracts unsettled. So that's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, to be honest with you.
So technically, the original budget was $2,660,000. Town administrator is recommending $2,653,000, right? Is there any?
Yeah, that's, yes, sir, that's correct. That's correct, everything's status quo. And again, where the staffing is, where we're at, not the time to bring it up, but it's been discussed in the past that, you know, at some point, the board does need to address the need for a second in charge. We really need to have that succession plan and continuity of operations. I'm not going to be there forever. I'm not going anywhere, but I'm not going to be there forever. And there are certain functions that I knew that have increased, certainly with police reform and the post-organization for certification of police officers, a lot of which falls to somebody out of the union in management. So we need to start thinking about that, but that might be a conversation that once we get some of these people back on board in the next four to six months that we come back and make a move on.
Jim.
Yep.
So Chief, you know, we've had the dialogue, your overtime budget hasn't been increased in a couple of years. I believe last year we ran a deficit in excess of $125,000 from year-end transfers. That's how we covered all of that stuff on that number. And this year, I believe, we're currently somewhere around a $50,000 deficit in the overtime line item to date, with about four months left on the books. So as much as I and we sit here and look at budgets and love to see level funded or in this case, a small negative number, this is not a realistic budget, in my opinion. And I think you know that, and I think members of the board know that. And we have some increases here, gentlemen, in permanent salaries. We have some increases in dispatch salaries. The amount of increases that you, the little amount of increases that you have in that with the small amount of increase that you've done to overtime, the $5,300, is not even enough to cover what we've done in the adjustments in permanent salaries and dispatch salaries, in my opinion. So, you know, we don't have a realistic police department budget, unfortunately. We haven't ratified a police department contract yet, so that could obviously change the scope of this budget. I would suggest to the board, we take a hard look at this, and it's always been our responsibility to put realistic budgets in front of the taxpayers now, not come supplement the budgets later, because that impacts taxation later on. Because if you're going to spend everything that we have, that we currently have for budgetary reasons, and you come back in the fall for 100 grand, $150,000, you're expending above and beyond, and that's coming from somewhere, and it's not really coming from the part of money that it's supposed to come from, right? And you artificially inflate the tax rate by doing that. So if we're all going to stay honest to ourselves, which we have to, this is the Super Bowl of what we really do, the Board of Selectmen really do is budgetary season. I personally feel this is inadequate budget at this point.
I agree. I agree. Unfortunately, the guidance that I've gotten, not necessarily this year, but I've gotten when calculating the budget the previous three years, first year that I did the budget, which was for FY '21, that was the COVID year, it was the end of the world, everything was just kind of status quo. The next two years, we have an unsettled police contract. The police contract expired June 30th of 2021. You know, we're almost going on two years.
Correct.
So my guidance, again, prior to now, is that you leave it as is until such time as we can correct it, we can correct the budget's numbers once we know what the settlement is going to be. Or once, once, once there's some sort of agreement, we can then adjust both numbers.
But we know the previous two years, and we weren't in the hole that we're in the hole this year, right, with the five minus five offices, right? So we know what the problem is this year with the overtime, right? And we're running way behind. We're going to be 150, probably 200 in deficit versus the 125, 150 last year.
On the overtime side, we will make up a little bit on regular salaries that will be able to offset that, because frankly, we don't have, we have unfilled positions that are not being compensated.
I get it, but the moral of the story is overtime budget, and we've talked to you in previous meetings coming in with concerns about overtime, this budget is not sufficiently budgeted for the overtime that we have.
Absolutely.
Regardless, last year we had all five offices on, and we ran 100-plus thousand-dollar deficit, right?
We lost, we lost four of them for May, June, the last two months of the year, so...
Not much.
Well, two months is, two months is two months.
But it's not 125, 140, whatever it was.
No, no.
So what I'm saying is, you know, I'm just trying to be reasonable, right? And responsible, quite honestly, to the taxpayers and to the department, right? We're underfunded, tell the story.
I agree.
I don't know what conversation is going to take place from this day forward with your budget, and we're all supposed to be trying to shake the tree as much as we can. I'm just letting you and letting the board and letting everybody at home know that I know this is an insufficient budget. And I'd like to know, quite honestly, where that funding source is going to come from, not from you, from Mr. Kelly, if that's the conversation that we're going to have, is we ratify a contract somewhere, if it happens after town meeting, where's that money coming from? Because we're going to do it on the fall town meeting, and it's going to be within the scope of what we have to budget for every year, right? And that's not going to be the case. And that's the problem with taxation. It's just adding to the problem of taxation, in my opinion.
Taking any contract settlement out, let's just leave that off to the side for now. A realistic overtime budget is probably somewhere around $400,000. It's probably somewhere around the average of what it's been for the last, around the last six or seven years. I mean, if it's been $255,000, it's gone up incrementally. Those only increases that I put in there were anticipated step raises that, based on years of service, or anticipated educational incentive raises. So that's the only minimal thing which we hadn't done. We did it last year, but we didn't do it for two years, because I was instructed to leave everything as is. So, but, you know, you ask me for a realistic overtime budget, it's probably somewhere around $400,000. I mean, given, given the average has been 440 over the last, you know, six years.
I just feel obligated, at this point in the budget season, to speak on every budget that I'm, I'm looking at today, to have a rational conversation with this board. FinCom's going to watch these meetings, Mr. Kelly's watching these meetings, you're here now. It's my fiduciary duty to explain to the people, I don't believe this is a sufficient budget for our public safety division.
I appreciate you calling attention to that, because it's, again, not just in my three-and-a-half-year tenure, it's probably gone back ever since an overtime line item was created in the police budget, which would have been maybe 15 years ago. It's traditionally, it's, it's underfunded, and it's, at the end of the year, it's, you know, scrambling, lifting up the, opening the drawer, and you know, lifting the rug, looking for money to...
Yep.
Which is not fair. I agree, it's not fair. It's not fair to anyone. Not fair to other departments that may have spending freezes instituted because they anticipate that where, you know, we're not going to be able to pay our, you know, our obligations, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I said my piece.
Okay. Mr. Hankley.
I think he pretty much covered it. I agree. I just want to say thank you for doing what you do, Chief, recognizing the fact that there is an issue here, even though your hands are kind of tied, but we'll work together to figure something out. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I apologize, I just, I don't mean to speak out of order, but did you want to speak to me about the dispatch situation that was on, under, I think it was under new business or old business?
You know, if we can do that to get you out of here, absolutely. Let's do that. Let's go to old business, number two. Good call, Chief.
This were two years ago, I probably wouldn't have said anything, and I would have gone back and sat down for two hours. Just, I sent, Jamie had asked for a memo last week to kind of like sum up where we are, how dispatch works. You should have it there, but it's just in general, we run, when fully staffed, we run four full-time dispatches on a four-and-two schedule, which generates two to four open shifts a week based on that rotating schedule. Those open shifts are filled by, are attempted to fill by part-time employees, but the limited availability, most of the time those shifts go to full-time, full-time dispatches at overtime. As a method of last resort, those shifts are offered to full-time police officers, but due to the shortages on the police side, the large amount of overtime trying to fill road shifts, they have very few available. And there's also a little bit of a difference of opinion that's being sorted out as far as contractually, whether or not police officers have to work the desk. But that's, that's a discussion for another day, that's been an ongoing discussion for a while. But where we're at now is we're down two full-time dispatches. One, we got into the Plymouth Police Academy, is in week two right now. Unfortunately, that place wasn't guaranteed until January 14th of this year, so we started shortly after that trying to fill, advertise, and whatnot, collect applications. About two weeks after that, one of the other full-time dispatches gave her notice, and I think, I believe the last meeting you read that, or accepted that letter of resignation, she is going to remain on per diem, but she had an opportunity to get into the field for what she was going to school, so can't, you know, fault any... She left on excellent terms, so I can't fault anybody for that, and she's willing to help out. I don't know how much that's going to be, that remains to be seen. So we're in the process of trying to fill two positions. But we find ourselves, we find ourselves in competition with neighboring communities, who are trying to do the same thing, much like with police officers, you know, law enforcement's not, in general, is not a very popular career choice anymore. So we find ourselves in competition with, you know, with State Haven, Freetown, New Bedford, you know, for dispatches. So what we've had to do in the meantime, while we're collecting the resumes and starting background checks, is we've had to, you know, kind of contract the department, where we had several special assignment people, detectives, that have had to pull them back in the fold. So basically, we have no detective division right now, they're working four-and-two in uniform as of, as of Sunday, to try to plug the holes, and also, so as not to burn out the two dispatches that we have. Frankly, I mean, it's, it's a struggle. The struggle to fill is based in part on wage scale on the dispatch side, and staffing on the police side, and then the unresolved issue with police officers working the desk in the Teamster contract that's lingered for a period of time. So I'm, I'm doing my best to fill those shifts and to fill the positions. I should have a better idea by the end of the week, at least be able to get maybe one of those positions squared away, and hopefully with somebody that doesn't require the training that's detailed in there, and get them on, on board a little bit sooner, and we can kind of free up some of our, you know, the special assignment officers that have been drawn in. But that's, that's basically where we're at with that in a nutshell.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Chief, could you talk about briefly, are we being poached by other communities?
Yes, straight up, and I won't mention the community by name, but I can tell you both of the full-time dispatches that we've had, that we have now, were both approached by a neighboring community, offering them significantly more money to go over there.
About how much more?
In one case, it was about $5 an hour, $5 more an hour. So I, it, I don't know if this is my place to even suggest this, or...
Of course it is.
I, I think it's worth a discussion, and we've been in the process of collecting comparable, comparables. It may require us to, in order to stay, stay self-sufficient, to maybe reopen on salaries for dispatches.
Do they have to be trained and certified before they...
Yes, there are several state requirements. The state requires a total of, before they even sit, come into a dispatch center and learn the ins and outs of a cushion of maybe of dispatching the ambulance, there are a number of prerequisite classes. There's a 40-hour public safety telecommunications class, there's a 32-hour emergency medical dispatch class, and then there's a 16-hour, what they call an exchange class, which is basically using the hardware and software, the 911 system. Fortunately, those classes aren't offered back-to-back-to-back, and then aren't offered frequently, and then aren't offered really locally as, as much as we would like them. So there is certainly, to be able to get an experienced dispatcher from another community, it saves you a significant amount of time. I mean, we, the dispatcher that just left, she was with us for two years, we were able to coach her from New Bedford a couple of years ago, and the, you know, the learning curve was, was very quick. They use a lot of the same systems that we use. So, you know, she was online probably within, I have to look back, probably online within three weeks.
Chief, what's the call volume, like, if you had to, you know, daily average?
Daily, wow, we average yearly? I could probably go that, that might be easier. Yearly, we're probably around 8,000 calls.
And that's between police, EMS?
No, I would say calls coming into the police department, which would be 911 calls and regular business line calls. Maybe about that number.
I mean, we get a handful that get called directly into us.
Yes, they do.
But for the most part, everything comes through police.
I'm just wondering, I'm just, the reason I'm asking that is that, you know, when we run an ambulance, right, we're billing out, I'm just wondering if there's a, is there a shit, we're not doing it as a shared cost at all, right? From, you know, revenue generated through EMS or whatever, you want to help soften the level? I don't know. I don't know, that money gets returned to the general fund, right? So...
Yeah, yeah, Tommy, that money gets returned to...
That goes, that money, that money that's generated from that goes directly to the EMS reserve receipt account.
Correct.
So it stays within the fire department's budget.
Correct.
So it's not...
A portion of that does get transferred into the general fund, but to help compensate and offset my budget.
But the, the other issue is, the ambulance calls, they bill a certain amount, that's a set amount, it's not divided between the paramedics, the ambulance, the dispatcher...
Right, right, I'm just trying to think of...
So I think what Chief Fallon said is, his calls, the 8,000 that your dispatches are handling, majority of that 911 is also including fire?
It would include ambulance runs more, so a lot of people still call, old school, still call a seven-digit number, you know, to report, you know, 911's been around for a long time, a lot of people still call.
Fire department did a combined, between fire and EMS, we did about 1,600 calls last year. Of those, I would say probably 1,200 to 1,300 on the way through Chief Richmond, the police department.
I'd like to think about that a little bit more, give you a way to, maybe something there and there, maybe not?
Yeah, I'll just throw this out right now, I'll just put this out there, because I always hear the conversation, and to put some people at rest, you know, within my department, is the conversation of regionalization of 911 centers comes up, it's come up all the time. It seems that the state, the state seems to be kind of trending in that way, or trying to force departments to go that way. I can tell you this, locally, and I'm not going to mention municipalities, locally there is a, that abuts us currently, a regional, a department that has regional dispatch. They lock their door, their station is unoccupied. If you want to go to the station, you go plus the door, it rings in Duxbury. Same thing if somebody in that town calls the business line, calls 911, it rings in Duxbury. I can tell you the closest, that may be the closest regional dispatch to us. I know there's one that's in Foxborough, there's one in Holbrook. I'm pretty sure that nobody here, I should say nobody in this room, but residents, we're still, we're still a small town, you know, we, big town problems, we're still a small town. There are a certain percentage of people that call, they like to talk to somebody they know. And I just, that, unless, unless you're, you're inclined to shutter the $7 million building, that's about $6 million, that's about six years old, seven years old, you know, 100 yards from the city of New Bedford, houses 100,000 people, and there's no savings at all. Because we're still, as long as I'm here, we're still going to have somebody at the desk, you know, to service walk-ins and do what they got to do. We're not going to, we're not going to shutter that building, we're not, you know, this is not 1970 in Western Mass, unfortunately, you know, the departments that have saved the money by going regional, most of those departments, you know, have had two people on the desk, a dispatcher and a police officer. So what they then do is they go to just one person at the desk, so there's an obvious cost savings there. We only scheduled one person on the desk. Rare, rare occasion, there might be two if there's a storm or something like that, but that's, that's very, very rare. In my time, I think we maybe only, you know, scheduled the equivalent of 24 hours, and we had two people on in three-plus years. So the only real cost savings comes from if you're reducing the number of people in dispatch, short a lock in the door, which is, in this day and age, you can't do.
And Chief, the Foxborough one is an anomaly in that it's all contiguous communities, correct?
Correct. I believe it's, I believe it's Foxborough, Mansfield, Norton, Eastern, yeah, Eastern, yes, Eastern. But I mean, you have, like I said, you know, Rochester going to Duxbury, I mean, I just...
Let me ask you this, if Rochester's going to Duxbury, I mean, and I was, I was thinking about that, but I don't want to speak out loud about a municipality. I mean, if we approached Rochester, I mean, could we absorb that volume over there?
My understanding is when you go regional, you commit to a period of time, because the regional dispatch, so to speak, assumes a lot of costs, whether the radio costs or computer costs, so you're committed to them for a period of five to 10 years. Like, it's like, it's like you sign a contract with it.
Oh, I see, okay. Because I'm just wondering if it's worth approaching Rochester as there, in that, you know, arrangement, this, and maybe we think about, like, if we could provide that service for them, just take on one municipality?
I can tell you right now, we're struggling right now to provide the service in this municipality with our staffing.
Right, but if we brought in the revenue, and then that would allow you to pay the dispatchers a more competitive wage, right? I don't know, I mean, I just, we can think, we can talk about this offline, but it just seems...
But I just felt the need to bring up the regional, like, I just felt the need to bring that up.
I think it's a terrible idea.
Some departments, you know, and some departments, it might work, you know, as Mr. Kelly said, that region, they're all contiguous, and they were, in most cases, were taking one person, one of two people off the desk. They were taking a police officer or a dispatcher off the desk, and they were saving the salaries there, so there was a significant savings there. But in our case, you know, just going to shutter the building, which is a horrible idea.
Most of the other places have gone regional, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, are fairly rural areas.
Western Mass is very, is very big.
Northern Worcester County.
Yeah, where you have a town of, you know, 1,000 people, and police force, so that, you know, that closes at, you know, at 4 o'clock, at midnight, and the state police take over. You know, that's, that's where the savings is, where they don't have to, you know, a lot of those are regional already in the sense that you had, you know, one dispatch set up for two or three departments, you know, for years.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Chief Fallon, fire EMS and EMA.
One-stop shop.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Chief. So of the three budgets that I presented to Mr. Kelly, he has selected option A, which is a bottom-line number of $1,110,000 and change, which if you look at the spreadsheet, is about a $7,000 decrease, in the sense that with the turnout gear article that I was appropriated at the fall town meeting brought my budget up to $1,117, so that's where the $7,000 savings comes in. You'll notice that there's not a lot consistent from last year to this year, through my first eight months, just working with the budget and seeing where things come from, that's what's caused a lot of the jump around, a lot of service contracts and different things like that, just needed to be moved into the right buckets, so that it was a true and accurate budget for, for next year.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Chief, my biggest concern, I understand that Mr. Kelly this year has reshuffled some buckets. Can you explain why we zeroed out call firefighters and then increased it in the part-time EMTs line?
That was actually a request by me. They're both part-time employees. Instead of having two separate line items to keep track of, why not pay all of our part-time staff out of one line? They both work continuously and interchangeably within my department, so I just felt it was easier to track and easier to, to manage on the budget side.
You don't see any issues with call in it being in that line item for EMTs? Because we do have a number of calls that aren't EMTs, right?
So...
And I, we, we have a labor shortage, and I don't need to be losing any volunteer people?
I actually have an answer for you.
Okay, boss.
In the memo that I provided with these, it's not going to stay labeled part-time EMTs, it's just going to be part-time employees.
I don't think I have that memo.
I'll make some photographs of it and bring it back down.
Okay, it's, that's fine, if that's, as long as we're clear on the legalities of how we're paying, and then you come to find out you can't pay a call from a EMT line item?
The title of that is actually going to change to just part-time salaries.
Okay. When we have the final template.
I just didn't see a big reason for reshuffling the deck on something that's been there for decades, so I just don't want to cause issues. And I don't need to talk about those issues on air, but we've talked about them offline, right? So there's some concern there, and I just, I don't want to...
Nothing structurally will be changing, just the name of the line item and combining it to make it easier to manage.
Okay. Your equipment inspections, they jumped pretty dramatically, software, those two line items?
Equipment inspection only went up $425.
Is that the one? Hold on one second, big guy. All R and M vehicles.
Yep, that's just to reflect, just the age of the vehicles are getting older. Costs, as with everything else in our country, are going down. We increase it by the 5,500, hopefully I don't have to come to you guys for a reserve fund transfer, hopefully we can...
I had a little hour mocked over at the inspection thing, so my bad on that one.
That's okay. Software, a lot of what we do is run with software. Our EMS reporting is done through software, our fire reporting is done through software. In the budget that I currently have, it was only at 75,000. In the budget that I currently have, it was only at seventy-five hundred, I've increased it to seventeen thousand, just because a lot of what the chief was paying out of was out of dues and subscriptions. That's where a lot of what Chief Gallagher was paying for some of these, but they were software subscriptions. So instead of having it down at dues subscriptions, I moved it into software, because that's actually where it belonged. So that's the reason for that.
Hey, very good. Budget's negative seven thousand, three hundred and nine dollars.
Okay.
And you're happy with that? Unless we have to come back with a sawzall to start chopping.
Always like more, but that's a budget that I think we can do some great things with next year, all right?
Good, thank you. All right, EMA, what do you got?
Same thing, we're going to go with option A, which I believe is twelve thousand, sorry, total of sixteen thousand, five hundred. There's not a whole lot in the budget.
Sixteen, four?
Yes.
Okay.
There's not a lot to the EMA budget. Ninety-nine percent of everything that happens at EMA is all on a volunteer basis. Basically, it's just to make sure that the power stays on and the equipment stays in good working order.
Right, thank you.
Also, like, Chief Richmond, if you have something, the final discussion on the part-time salaries. So I don't know if you want to take that up now, or if you want to hold off. The ready was on the new business number.
Yeah, let's do it.
Two?
Yeah, let's do it. So we had met, just briefly to talk about it. And I created that, that scale that we were talking about. None of this would take effect until July first. This would just fix, provide just a small adjustment to the call firefighters and the part-time EMS employees as a poll.
Where were, where were they? This is a new proposed, where was, where's the old rate?
So, the old rate is, as a call firefighter, is seventeen seventy-six, and as an EMT basic, it's also seventeen seventy-six. And the reason why there's a difference is part-time EMT or part-time paramedic are slightly more responsible for things while they're on duty, checking the truck, making sure the equipment is stocked and all of that, so that's why there's now a variation in the, in the base price.
The other ones, we've already discussed on the first category in rec, right? So is the only one that changes the top one, the eighteen twenty-five?
Correct.
And then the bottom one, I don't have old rates? To know what those.
So the EMT, there's only one, seventeen seventy-six per hour, no matter how long you're with us. So I just wanted to mirror the union contract as far as adding a little extra compensation for someone's loyalty and hard work for us over the years. So the timeframes match the same, so it's base, and then after four, after eight, and after twelve, same thing with the paramedic. And this will also help us stay more competitive with other rates for part-time employees in our surrounding communities, so that we can continue to keep the best possible staffing out.
So with these rates, I'll ask the question, because this should have been discussed probably offline, because I hate doing this online, but seeing how here we are. No, no conflict with the current contract as far as rate?
Not contractual.
Correct. Wrong. Pay that low.
I, I understand this one, I'm seeing this salary comp to the, to the contract.
Both lower.
Exactly, any questions?
You good with this? Yeah, we discussed this in motion to approve? So.
Thank you.
A little fair.
Aye.
How are you, gentlemen?
Good night.
Hi, rhythm.
See you, Chief.
All right. Ms. Levante.
I only did this for the town meeting and election line item. Just to give you a good idea of why I feel that a much more dramatic increase is needed for the wages. Do you all have the option one, two, and three?
No, they don't.
They don't? Oh, okay. So what do they have?
Is this for a town meeting and elections?
Yes.
The fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty option.
I didn't even have that as an option. I had fourteen thousand, one forty, fourteen thousand, four twenty-three, and thirteen, five sixty-six. But regardless, I did what, what Mr. Kelly had asked of us by creating a budget with the one percent, the five percent, realizing and knowing that this is not going to be a realistic budget. And the reason that there is such a difference in what I've proposed in the sheet that I gave you, I've broken down the actual cost in each.
This should be exactly what we have, all three of your budgets. I have an extra copy.
Okay, I don't know where that came from.
Which one do you want?
Town meeting and elections. I don't know where, I don't know where that came from, but as you see, if you take a look at the sheet that I gave you.
This is, is this the source of truth right here?
This is what I'm looking for, yes. The numbers that I gave for the requests one, two, and three unfortunately did not work for me. I did it because that's what was requested. But they will not work primarily because effective January, twenty twenty-three, the Votes Act was enacted. And as you know, over the last couple of years, we have had vote by mail and early voting. We have been fortunate to have some of that funding returned to the town, because it was not, it was not set in law. Well, now it is law. So even if you were to like, look at my budget for this year, my budget is nowhere near where it was originally proposed, because that law had not been enacted at the time. So the cost for the early voting, the five days prior to the election, the cost from the processing of vote by mail ballots from July through each election, that cost was not included in last year's budget, because we did not anticipate that that would be going through. So I figured if I gave you the breakdown of what the actual cost is per election, that you would find that helpful. And please keep in mind that the number of people that we have listed here are, they are required by law. So we are required to have a minimum of two people on our end table. We are required to have a warden, a clerk at each precinct. So if you can see that the cost from what we did have, I had requested fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty for twenty twenty-three, again, prior to the enactment of the Apps Law. And I'm asking for eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four. This is going to cover early voting, which is the vote in-person and the vote by mail for the presidential primary, which will be March fifth. The, it will be the staffing for the presidential primary. It will be the annual town meeting staffing, and I do have the date as May thirteenth, but I know we've changed this year, so I'm not sure if we'll be keeping it the same date next year, so that, the date is subject to change. The vote by mail for the annual town election, which now all of the applications, I have opted to give the residents greater opportunity for voting, I have now included applications in every one census that goes out. Those applications have been coming back fast and furiously. So I anticipate that we will have, if all of these ballots come back, we will have a really great turnout for the local election. That will, that election will be May eighth, and then it'll also cover the special town meeting, providing that we do have one, but we, over the last few years have been, so I'd rather be prepared than not. So you can see that the presidential primary is going to run just for staffing alone, five thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars. Now that's give or take, sometimes we're there much longer than we anticipate. And I will say that since the precinct changes and that we now have an additional precinct, I do anticipate it's a little bit slower of a process. Because now during the day, instead of having people coming in, we're also filtering in vote by mail ballots that we've received, or the vote in-person ballots that we've received. So there have been times that we haven't gotten out of a precinct until one o'clock in the morning. You know, I always hope that that's not the case, but it does happen. But what I did was I just estimated the sixteen hours would be, you know, that would be the traditional. The local election, I do, you'll notice that the hours are reduced, because the local election is for less time, and that is four thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. The cost for the annual and special town meeting, and I did estimate this a little bit higher. I would say maybe an hour at the most for each individual, but the total cost for the two would be, and should not exceed twelve hundred and forty-one dollars. So if you add all of those up, let's see. The, yes, if you add all of that up, that brings you to fifteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four. So as you can see, that's lower than what I was asked to do. And being in the position of being the election administrator, I really can't control whether we have an election or not. So unfortunately, I don't believe that, that there's really anything that we can do to reduce that cost. Obviously, if someone calls out sick that day, that'll be one less person that I would have on. But the reason that I've asked for an additional three thousand is those are only the man-hours at the election or at the in-person voting. That does not include all of the tallying, the opening of the envelopes, the mailing of the envelopes, the data entry into the computer. We need staff in order to be able to do that. I have been fortunate this year, where I've been able to utilize a senior work-off person, which has been a great benefit. Actually, she's going to stop in the office on Friday, so that has been very helpful. But getting that one person, I need more bodies, because we've got a lot of processing to do. Everything needs to be sorted, signatures on envelopes need to be verified. There is a lot to the process, and I, I truly welcome any one of you or all of you to come into our office and spend a couple of hours during that time, so you can really see what goes into processing an election. Yes.
Can you just give me the eighteen thousand number that you were starting? I missed, because I.
It's right up at the top, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four, right on the front page?
Oh, well, yeah, eighteen, so that's what you want this budget to be? Town meetings and election is eighteen thousand?
Seven sixty-four.
Seven sixty-four. And you, you've answered my other question by explaining the additional few thousand bucks for your fifteen to what your original request is going to be.
Right, and we also do the census in-house, so it's important that I have individuals making photocopies, stuffing envelopes, doing the mailings, which, that is another note that I do want to make, that does not impact my budget, but it impacts the town's budget. We are required to send out the early voting ballots postage, we pay for the postage. It's not paid for from the state. So that is an additional cost that is, that is endured by the town. That is now becoming a permanent from the Votes Act. Okay? But again, the census printing, the stuffing of the envelopes, that all, again, it takes the manpower to do it. So I'm figuring we've got, you know, I'm asking for an extra three thousand on top of the, that fifteen thousand to cover those costs.
It's the cost to run elections, that's the cost to run elections.
That's what it is. All right, thanks. It's a necessary, very important expenditure.
Okay, so as for the other line items that I have, the only thing that I did do, this would be the town clerk line item. I did ask for an increase of two thousand dollars for salaries, and also an increase of seven hundred for the temporary salaries. And that's because the, the staff in the office, even though I have part-time staff, we run into a problem with overtime during elections. And elections, I think I've said this, you know, previously, elections used to be, okay, it's a, it's a month period, and then you move on to the next project. Now we're talking many months, as a matter of fact, the Clerks Association just did an assessment, and it was determined that in twenty twenty-four, a clerk's responsibilities will be spent forty-four weeks out of fifty-two weeks on elections. So that does not include dog licenses, citations that we help the animal control officer with, business licenses, anything like that. That's, and vital records, which is a key fact. So that's to help. I know right now, I'm extremely over in my temporary, the temporary line item. And that has to do with my internal staff also having to work over their hours to help, to help manage the elections. Everything else, vital statistics, I'd only left a dollar last year, but it's imperative that our vital records are bound and archived. So I don't want to get too far behind on that. So I brought back my usual six hundred dollars to get that done.
I don't, I don't see that in this budget.
That's not in the recommended budget.
Oh.
You have my, you have the budgets, Pam, I gave you all three of your budgets, and it should be what we're looking at.
Okay, why was that not in my recommended budget? That's a.
That's a cut.
You see it? You, do you have the budget where it says a dollar still?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Where it says six hundred and twenty, twenty-two actual, and then the original budget in twenty twenty-three was a dollar.
Okay.
And so in twenty twenty-four, we kept it at a dollar.
Pam, can I ask a question?
Sure.
On that, on that line item, vital statistics, you said something about record bindings?
Yes.
Can that be done via an article instead of a, a source from budgetary? Can that be done via an article instead of a source from budgetary, from budgetary? So if it's, do you do that only in one year, or is it, the only time you use it for a budgetary is where it's reoccurring every year?
Right.
If something like this is not reoccurring, and you needed $1,000, whatever the number is, could we do it, this is a question, can we do it via an article and capture the money that way?
We could do that, but it should be a reoccurring item. It should be done every year. So I lapsed last year because I knew I had the elections coming up, I had three elections and two town meetings. So I did, I said, you know, something I can afford, you know, to hold off, but I need to pick it up the following year.
And in 2021, it was not funded too, right?
Right, and that was due to COVID. That was part of, that was part of the COVID budget.
How much money are we talking for that vital statistics?
Six hundred.
What we want to do here, gentlemen?
You know, I've talked about this a number of times already through these budget seasons, and it's, we need, we need our departments to give us a realistic budget for them to do their job. I guess is the easiest way for me to put this. You know, I don't see how somebody's budget, I mean, this budget's up $4,265. If you add the extra $600, you're talking $4,900. It's not a level-funded budget. Again, it's a request that's something that's needed, and I think, I believe, after we're all done going through budgets, we're going to do this process all over again because of the rate of where other people are going to come in with their spending. Unfortunately, we're going to have a much, this board is going to have to have much more dialogue on what are we doing with money? Because I don't think we're going to make it based on what I see with other departments' needs. We don't, there's not enough money. And I think sooner or later, we have a realistic conversation with everybody, and including the taxpayers of this town. And that's our job, is to provide realistic budgets one go around. Ah, we're going to get money from unexpended articles, and that's how we're going to fund these things in the fall, and then you artificially inflate in the budget, so you didn't really balance the budget with what you're supposed to, and no free cash, and, you know, I don't like the idea that I'm lying to myself. It is what it is, and we're going to have to have that tough conversation, right? I mean, but there's certain things that you just have to spend money on. And that's the crappy conversation, I mean, it's a conversation we need to have, though.
Kevin, I think you're onto something, and as we're going through like the elections.
Yeah.
Like, we know that's something that we have to spend every, every year on, in some shape or form. Yes, it's a budgetary item, but, I mean, I look at that, is that, I mean, could that be something that's spent out of free cash? Why?
It's reoccurring every year.
But it's not the same every year.
It's reoccurring.
I mean, I'm trying to find, you know, I'm trying to relieve, relieve the pressure, right?
You have to use free cash on non-reoccurring items. This is a reoccurring cost. Now, if you use free cash, then you have to have a three-year plan filed with DOR on how you're going to replenish it.
Okay, so with that comment being made, we've already talked about this, but with that comment being made, again, there's no way for anyone to say, "I'm going to use $300,000 of free cash, and this is how I'm going to pay it back." If you're already struggling to make the money this year, you have no means of paying that money back. So that kind of alleviates the whole conversation of, "We're going to pay it back, but we don't know how."
I would suggest to the board, because this is your budget, that if you think it should be added here, then you add it. And then when we look at what the damage is for the first run-through of the budget, then you're going to have to sit down and determine where...
Where all the cuts are coming from.
Yep.
And how much money that we have to cut, based on what everybody else is doing. Yeah, when I say that, I brought it up, and I'll say it again, the old Colony budget, and I used that one, because we know what that expected increase, what our increase in Chapter 70 funding is coming from. And then we have our school department's budget, which is our big budget. We don't know what that anticipation of what that number's going to come in, but if you kind of look at what Old Colony's doing, being the size of Old Colony, you look at the size of the schools, and you look at it, let's just call it double, there's all the money that you have available, and everybody else is left sucking rocks, minus all our contractual obligations and our fixed costs. We're looking, we're probably, if you want me to throw a number out, I bet you, you're probably looking at a three-quarter of a million, million-dollar deficit right now, right?
No. Mr. Gaspar, I had the conversation with the school department today. You are looking at, from everybody's requests, after we've tried to take the scalpel to sum, not the machete, the scalpel, you're looking at revenue around $800,000, additional expenses $1,500,000.
So that's $700,000. What number did I just say? $750,000?
You said a million, so...
A $750,000 million, whatever it was, right? I mean, hey, I'm just saying, it, you know, it's, it's not easy, right?
It's going to be a tough year.
It's been, it's been tough years for a long time, we've been doing this for a long time, it's been tough years for a long time, it's just, but we've been, previous town administrators have always used a portion of free cash to balance the budget, and that's where it comes to our taxpayers, and they wonder why, "Hey, why did my tax bill do this?" Well, spending a lot of money. I said, it's a spend, it's stupid, right? We got to figure that out, and we got to stay within our means, and it's extraordinarily difficult with our contractual obligations and our fixed costs rising the way they are. That's it, so we'll figure it out.
I'm sorry that...
Pam, your presentation has turned the town's budget upside down.
I'm just so sorry.
And that's $600.
And I know, and, I mean, in all honesty, if it's something that you as a board and Mr. Kelly feel that, you know, for this time I should put it through as an article, then by all means. I just know that it's a job that needs to be done.
We might be looking for $500, but trust me, I think for $500, that's, that's tough. Thank you, Pam.
Is it the board's consensus to add the $600 to the bottom line before we do the cuts?
Yes.
Then the Board of Registitors?
Oh, and the Board of Registitors, I mean, well, wait a minute, let me take a look at...
24-923.
I just want to make sure that yours is not...
It's a reduction.
Oh, no. Yeah.
Come on, we got to save some, some money with you, your budgets are up.
I understand that, but I didn't have the demands under this new law that we, under the act...
You're up like 90s already, I'm counting.
I know, I know, I'm sorry.
Take it to the finance committee.
Does the board want me to deal with the clerk and come back at a future date with this budget?
Sure, to the finance committee.
Okay, I'm scheduled to meet with the finance committee tomorrow. While I'm here, did you want to also discuss the town meeting? You had mentioned about the date, or do you want to save that for another?
Save that for another time.
The date was already voted on, the 22nd.
Right.
We'll talk about next year, next year. We might, we might have you in to talk about elections and all that, the days that we're holding them, right?
That would be, that would be...
But we're not on the agenda for that, so we'll put it on the agenda, we'll talk about that.
Okay, that, that sounds great.
Thank you, Pam.
Okay, thank you all.
Pam? Gentlemen, I'm going to ask for a point of privilege, we got a very, very important thing we've got to do. I wanted to do it earlier in the meeting. Lisa, if you would, Lisa, if you would come up to the podium. As many, as some of you know or don't know, our longtime executive assistant, administrative assistant Lisa Leonard, today is her last meeting, tomorrow's her last day with the town of Acushnet after 18 years. Lisa, I know this isn't an easy moment for you.
No, it's not.
It's not an easy one for me, I'm sure for everybody at the board, with the board. Just from a personal standpoint, Lisa, I've known Chuck since high school, I've known you as a colleague, but as a mother, as a wife, now a grandmother, and you've got great things ahead of you.
Yes.
Above and beyond the town of Acushnet, so I wanted to thank you for your dedicated service.
Well, thank you, and I want, I want to thank everybody that I've worked with, it's been a good, it's been a good run, 18 years is a long time, and, I mean, I've enjoyed everything that's come about here, and I'm going to wish my, miss my work family, so...
You should know, you've been the backbone of this town for a very, very long time, and while it's natural for the elected officials to take all the credit for all the stuff that goes on in town, the reality is, it's someone like you who's really kept this engine running through the first-ever town administrator to an inter, you know, the second town administrator to the third, to the fourth, and so for that, thank you very much.
I know my own time coming.
So on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, as you know, we like to do a little citation. The Board of Selectmen would like to recognize your 18 years of service, devotion, and excellence, your can-do attitude and willingness to help anyone and everyone will be greatly missed. Thank you for all you have done, and best of luck with your next chapter. And a glass of red wine from us tonight to celebrate Valentine's Day with Chuck, think of the town, but we'll be thinking of you, so thank you for everything you've done for us. Gentlemen, I don't know if you have anything you want to offer, a sec?
I just, you know, it's hard, she's been unemployed for a long time, she's, she's worked with me for 12, 13 years now. We put her under a lot of stress, and thank you.
Lisa, I didn't even get a full year with you. I feel like I've known you for a lot longer than that. You've made this a lot easier than I expected, sitting in this chair. You answer every phone call. Sometimes you call me, tell me to answer my phone, and I appreciate that. Just want to say thank you, it's been awesome. I know it hasn't been that long, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're wonderful.
Means a lot.
Really? I know you don't want to acknowledge this moment, so I won't, fine.
I'll just say thank you, she and I have had our discussion.
Yes, we did.
Well, Lisa, again, thank you very much, and come on over. All the best to you.
All right, thanks.
Take care. Don't break that.
Yeah, I know.
Go have fun.
Thank you.
Speak my turn. Just like, yeah. I'm sure I'll see you.
Yes.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Lisa.
Lisa, you going to be in in the wanted?
Yes.
I got to meet in with Mr. Kelly, so I'll come in and see you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll be here.
All right.
See you later, everybody.
Yep, next item. We have Mr. Isaac here, I mean, I've been doing this, but tonight, let's, let's have Ed come in, we're just going to bounce out of order. Golf salaries part-time, I think we, this has been on the table for quite some time, right?
Good evening.
Yep.
There should be two, our two memos, packages. First one has to do with spending of the, some of the $300,000 from the last town meeting article. Golf committee voted to recommend spending $31,000 from those articles for repair of the bunkers on hole number two, $11,900, rebuilding the car pass on number two, $13,000, and to remove trees on hole number two and number eight for $6,000.
And this is money that's already been appropriated, right? So you're just giving us the heads up that you're going forward with that? Okay, very good, next item.
We just need a vote, a vote.
Motion to approve.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the second memo has to do with wage increases. As you know, the Massachusetts minimum wage went up again to $15. It moved from $2,000 for $11 in 2018 to $15 January 1. And the board has supported the golf committee all these years in having the wages at the golf courts match the minimum wage that Massachusetts put in place, even though it's not applicable to town rec, towns. And the golf committee, the last increase was 75 cents on January 1. And the golf committees recommend that we increase all maintenance, all golf courts wages by 75 cents.
Okay.
So we move the minimum grade one up 75 cents to $15 per hour, and to add all the other grades, two through seven, in addition, 75 cents to keep them relative, relative in comparison to grade one.
Okay.
And we're seeking your approval for them.
Gentlemen? That's, that's excluding management, though, right? Excluding management, right?
Just salary.
Just salary, these are just the...
Hourly wages.
The workers and the maintenance crew and all that.
Grade two through grade seven.
Motion to approve, so moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, Ed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Yeah, right. Sorry to hear Lisa's leave.
Yeah. Big loss. All right, let's see, Board of Health. Nobody here from the Board of Health? Looks like it's pretty flat, right?
Yes.
Okay?
$1,700, right?
Flat?
Yeah. Just for the next, the next budget, if you guys just look at the overtime, the $800 in the Board of Health's budget, and then we'll go to, I think the next one's conservation, so we can have that discussion.
Okay. Next item. Conservation. Nobody here?
So the only, I would like to bring up, and bringing back the fact that the Board of Health's budget has $800 in the overtime, and from what I've gotten, that overtime budget is for the clerks for working the minutes, doing minutes for the meetings. By the, I guess, the contract for the ASME contract, part of that agreement, is that correct, Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And if you look at what the Board of Health, and the amount of times the Board of Health actually meets, based on what that rate is for that individual, either or, it's nowhere close, because they meet maybe, if you're lucky, once a month, and that's if you're lucky once a month, and it's, you're lucky if that meeting's even an hour long. So then that brings us to conservation, and you look at the overtime there, salaries overtime, same, same case, $450. I think it's insufficient funding. The conservation has, you know, up to two-hour meetings nowadays. I don't think, if you do the rate, and I did the rate based on two meetings a month, because that's what they're basically doing, two-hour meetings, it would be 48 hours at the OT rate, they would need $1,635. If you did an hour-and-a-half meeting, it comes out to $1,226. And they're already short-funded in this year's budget for that line item to cover that salary for somebody doing minutes. So, again, kind of same thing, you got to give realistic budgets. Mr. Kelly can have a conversation with the Board of Health agent and see if that $800 can be, you know, that one probably belongs at $450 based on the number of meetings that they're having, based sometimes their hourly rate. And this one probably, in my opinion, needs to see some kind of an increase, so even at $1,200, you'd be doing an hour-and-a-half meeting instead of a two-hour meeting, you know, I think that's reasonable. Even if you went to an hour meeting, you're going to need about $900, so you're going to need twice what you have there, and they're already in deficit this year.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Kelly, I mean, you're telling me with AI, that there's, there's no way that we can transcribe these meetings between, like, we get the meetings taped, or they're on YouTube, and there's not like a service that would transcribe this, or?
Not for that price. Now, the question is, since it's overtime, then it would have to be overtime.
But why is it overtime? What are they doing? Are they actually going to the meeting?
Yeah, they're coming in at night to sit down and do the meetings.
But why can't they just take the meeting the next day?
That's up to the board.
And then, like, we've had times with Lisa or whatever, they watch the meeting the next day on YouTube... And then, like, we've had times with Lisa or whatever, they watch the meeting the next day on YouTube and bang it out the next day, what do they have to be at a meeting for?
Well, the Board of Health is an independently elected board.
That's why I said Mr. Kelly would have to have that conversation. So you're basically, here we are again, stealing from Peter the PayPal. If you took four fifty from there and put, switched the two budgets around, you don't need a couple hundred extra bucks for CONCOM, is all I'm saying.
You will also see that we did the proper, Todd did the proper computations as far as-
The allocations for salaries.
The shared positions.
Yeah, I figured all of that out too, as well, by their hourly rate. I'm just, I'm just saying, we're underfunded again this year. This is another budget problem that's, that's been out there. Four fifty doesn't work, it's clear. So again, I would just say, it's not a budget buster. I mean, even if, if you added six hundred dollars, you put in a thousand fifty or whatever, it's a lot better than four hundred and fifty, that you're already over-expended and you still have five months left in the calendar year, is all I'm saying. So it's like a, it's a six hundred dollar issue, like Pam's six hundred dollar issue? Six hundred dollar issue.
Yeah, like, think, why, you fund it to what it is, and they can get the meeting, they can watch the meeting the next day, right?
I think it's, I, I, Mr. Kelly would know better, but it, because it's a union, it's, it's contracted, I think, that way, right?
Well, if the individual has to spend more time beyond the hours, it has to be overtime.
Right, well, I'm saying, so they don't, shouldn't have, you shouldn't have to go to the meeting with the ability to pull the thing up on YouTube.
That's a-
I know, I know, but we should encourage the elected boards to do the same thing.
That would have to be a discussion, I can enter the discussion, but it would end up being a discussion between this board and that board as both independently elected boards.
That's a, that's a hard, that goes back to the-
That's for the Board of Health, I, I'm not asking, you can leave that one alone, but I think if you have that dialogue and you figure out the hours, all right? Because there's a lot of chatter about the, how many meetings they have and they don't have. And if you do the, the math, it doesn't work out.
Right.
The hourly rate times twelve meetings a year doesn't come out to eight hundred bucks. It comes out to four hundred if you're lucky.
Now, the conservation-
That's all I'm saying, so if it's-
Conservation's appointed by the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen, if they want to increase this budget, it's your purview.
Who does the meeting, who does the minutes for the CONCOM?
The secretary, the clerk, that's why it's, there's clerk one, clerk two. So they have a part-time clerk, they have a part-time CONCOM agent. We've saved a bundle of money in conservation by going full-time to part-time. There's, there's, I'm looking at it going, you're underfunded. Just throw another six hundred at it, and you should be a lot better off. If they can get their meetings down to an hour-and-a-half, you should be pretty close to fully funding that position at that point. Again, an hour-and-a-half meetings, two meetings a, a month, that's twenty-four hours, that's twelve hundred and twenty-six dollars, based by the hourly rate that I came up with for the individuals by the contract, ASME contract. It's not a big deal.
And if you add six hundred bucks, it's still below the original budget.
I'll, I'll put together-
I make a motion, add six hundred dollars to the overtime line item in Conservation Commission.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So that'll be a thousand and fifty, that line item.
All right. And you approved the three budgets with those changes?
What budgets?
Conservation, health, and-
I wouldn't, I mean, if, if, if we're going to be splitting nickels later on down the road, I mean, we just voted for six hundred additional dollars. If you talk to the Board of Health agent, and, and you run that line item, has that overtime line item got close to eight hundred dollars, based on the amount of meetings they have? And if that's the only reason why you're paying out overtime, where's that line item? It, it's all there at the Town Accountants Office. I haven't gotten that far yet, but I think that based on if that's for meetings.
One year it was four ninety, another was nine hundred.
Again, you can have that conversation, it is a separate elected board. The town administrator has the right to speak to anybody and do whatever they want to do. If we can come to an agreement and cut that number, it is what it is.
Okay. Inspection rule, you can see the cuts, we moved technology and we moved the commissioner rating. Other than that, it's pretty much flat.
That budget comes in at a negative twenty-three, four, three forty-six, but twelve of that has been moved to tech, as Mr. Kelly said, so roughly eleven thousand, seven hundred. And the last one is Soil Board, right?
Yep.
Little Soil Board, Mr. Kelly, a question for you. From the Soil Board Chairman to you, you cut twelve hundred dollars in salaries clerical, but we up office supplies by six hundred dollars. So it's counting, seems counterintuitive that you would raise office supplies, but cut your clerical staff, so.
We have clerical staff for the Soil Board? Who knows that?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking, if we don't know, we don't know.
You don't know, but I imagine, I put that money in because I imagined with the new rate scale and the fact that we're talking about new bylaw and rules and regs, we're going to have to publish them, and we're going to have to also advertise.
That's why office supplies are up.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, just knowing that we don't have a secretary, and under the bylaw, it says that we can't appoint an inspector and/or a secretary if we so choose. So just saying, I understand the need for money.
All right. Very good. All right, next item, under new business, Bristol County Retirement. Gentlemen, I'd like to hold off on this, we have a little bit more information on it. It looks like they're giving out COLAs, giving an additional two percent above the three percent that they voted-
Yep.
Last year. I know they can do it.
And it's retro, but two-thirds of the communities have to approve it.
I don't understand why, but I'd like to know more about it, so.
I agree.
Motion to table.
So.
All right, we're at the golf course.
I would like the Planning Board Staffing and Slocombe Street project to be tabled.
Okay, motion to table, Planning Board.
Slocombe to.
Slocombe as well.
Motion to table both Planning Board and Slocombe Street.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, all right, so now we're going into, oh, I'm sorry, any selectmen announcements, gentlemen?
Just happy Valentine's Day to anybody out there watching.
Agreed. All right, we have, next meeting is February Tuesday, February twenty-
Eighth.
Eighth, wait a minute, hold on here.
So, so we, we got a, we got a week's break again?
I might have a, I have a schedule conflict on the twenty-eighth. So are you comfortable, gentlemen, would you be okay moving it to March seventh?
No, because we have a Soil Board meeting.
I mean, the March seventh.
When?
March seventh. And we're running into the closing of the law.
Can you do Wednesday, or you're not around?
I can do Thursday or Friday. Friday or Thursday.
What, it depends, why don't you, why don't you just do this? Why don't you have a conversation with Mr. Kelly on what's going to be on that agenda? And if that's something that we can schedule a different time instead of the four PM?
DPWN enterprise accounts.
So there you go, it's, we're just doing a few budgets. I know it's two weeks out, so there might be more stuff, but that's between you, Mr. Chairman, and the town administrator.
Gentlemen, if you guys want to roll without me, that's fine, too.
I mean, I'm not going to.
Oh, I need two days' notice to let me.
We'll figure it out, right? So just, just let it roll, you have that conversation with Mr. Kelly. If you want to do Thursday, if we can do it, you know, you know, whatever works for Mr. Inkley as the working man, eleven o'clock in the morning, you know, lunchtime, twelve, or whatever you want to do, I'll, I'll make arrangements on my, yeah, so whatever we have to do to accommodate Mr. Inkley.
Very good, it's a forty-eight hours notice is all I really need, so, okay?
Just like the open meeting law. Just like the open meeting law.
We've got an executive session on the general law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, three, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, or to conduct, conduct contract negotiations with union personnel, certification of steelworkers union. If an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body as the chair so declares, and the board will not return the public session. Is there a motion to go in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Little call vote, Mr. Gaspar?
Yes.
Mr. Inkley?
Yes.
I mean, yes, and we will not be returning the public session.